Good evening. This meeting of July 18th, 2016 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Mr. Bytine.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Seager.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
All right, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 13th and the strategic plan update on June 27th, 2016 as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 13th and the strategic plan update on June 27th, 2016 as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Red carpet recognition.
Yeah, absolutely.
A man comes bearing trust.
I'm sure that everybody in the room knows, but for the benefit of our TV audience, we receive as a school district dollars from the DRA, Dubuque Racing Authority, every year based on the grants that we submit that come from the proceeds of the profits of that organization. It's been a huge boom for our school district for a number of years. We have enhanced technology, we've enhanced security, the Raptor system that you go through when you enter our buildings are just a few examples. So, I'll step out of the way and ask and invite for a few words here about this year's DRA grants. So, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me this evening. I'm Brian Southwood. I'm vice president for Grants and Special Projects at Dubuque Racing Association. Just a little different this year on how we handle the grants for the schools. Talking with Joni, talking with the representatives from Western Dubuque and Holy Family, the committee decided that the way we were doing it with the schools just wasn't working right and we were missing some of the schools that had good projects because of that. So, we had them submit one grant listing what each school wanted. So, we gave one amount to the school district and then the you people decide how you're going to spend the money. So, it took that pressure off of our board. We think it worked well from the feedback I'm getting. One thing I must say with Joni, over the years, other school districts adopted what she was doing to help make the grants come into us smoother. I mean, she's been a real great asset to you and to me on when it comes to grant time. So, tonight, I'd like to present to you a check for $120,000 that represents this year's grants for the, to the Dubuque Community School District from the Dubuque Racing Association.
Awesome, thank you.
When I decided, when I was invited to do that, I thought, maybe I'd better look at what we've done in the past. And so, here is a listing of what each school has received. But in the total, for the schools since we opened in 1985, $3,332,835 have gone to either the schools or the organizations that support the schools.
So, that's another check we can cash.
You'd like to see that check.
That's another check we can cash.
Yeah.
We just doubled it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't think.
What I gave there is a listing for each school and the total that each school has
received over the 30 years, so.
And we'll make this available to school board members so that you see that.
Yeah, I made copies for them so they can.
And you'll notice in a lot of our facilities, you'll see signs or plaques designating different things that the DRA has done. It's really made significant difference. Now, those are projects that either would be further down the road or maybe not happen at all that we're able to put in place because of the DRA grants.
Thank you very much. I'm sure you'll have more projects for me to look at next week.
Brian, how long have you been with the DRA?
People accuse me of having, being there before the building was built. I came in as the paint was being dried in '85, so.
Wow.
And then, we hired some people to help us. So, Mr. Prohaska was one of my first hires. He took care of the parking lot for me. So, we educated him on how to do scheduling, counting money.
Well, you never bet a thousand, you know.
No, I know.
You know, you gotta.
You notice he didn't quit his day job.
I know. But Brian, we, I just on behalf of the board, we thank everything, you know, the DRA and obviously their support of public education in Dubuque and we can't echo enough your comments about Joni. I mean, she does make the trains run on time around here and I'm glad to hear that she had the same impact of the DRA.
Thank you.
Right, I think we want to get another quick picture if you don't mind. Where do you want us to?
Right there. All the board members can smile in the background.
No, we're photobombing.
Doing something wrong in the back.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the senior high school additions and renovations project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing on the senior high school additions and renovations project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in open session. Anyone wishing to address the board on the senior high, high school additions and renovations projects?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form, and contract of estimated total cost of the senior high school additions and renovations project. Whereas, on the ninth day of May, 2016, plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost were initially filed with the secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the senior high school additions and renovations project. And whereas, a notice of hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for said public improvements was published as required by law. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa. Section one, that the said plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost for the senior high school additions and renovations project are hereby approved and adopted as the plans, specifications, form, and contract of estimated total cost for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the senior high school additions and renovations project as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Burkhardt can report out on the bids.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Ryan Gans, good evening. Shortly before coming over, I looked at my notes. Do you realize it was August 11th, 2014, the Board approved Stracka-Johnson to be the architect for the project? And here we are two years later. Just wanted to make you aware just real quickly, there were 40 user group meetings and 42 core planning group meetings to bring us this far. And the bids, bids were received open and read aloud on June 23rd, 2016. Shortly after 2:00 PM, six bids were received. Wanted to remind you that three of the six bids were from local contractors. Six bids are Conlon Construction Company, base bid amount $25,100,000. JP Cullen &amp; Sons, $26,383,581. Larson Construction Company, $27,068,000. Portson Construction Incorporated, $25,759,000. Russell Construction Company, $29,000, excuse me, $29,075,000. And Tricon Construction Group, $25,365,000. In your board packet, you'll find a letter of recommendation from Stracka-Johnson recommending also accepting two alternate bids. Number three, to add $95,900 to include a terrazzo flooring in the active commons area. And number seven's a credit for $89,600 to use asphalt instead of concrete at the east parking lot. The base bid and the two recommended alternates, combining all soft costs, will be achievable with your stated $30 million budget. Stracka-Johnson Architects in Buildings and Grounds therefore recommends the award project to Conlon Construction. Project is planned to start August 9th and take about 30 months to complete. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? I know there's been only 42 core meetings and multiple discussions at facilities, but...
So, if you're not sure.
It was nice to see that we had a lot of local bidders in on the project. It was nice to see that the bid came a little bit under what we originally projected. And I think the company that we've, we've contracted with, we've done a fine job.
Principal Johnson wanted me to extend his excitement for the project to this afternoon. He's very excited to get started.
Great. Thanks, Phil. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa. Section one, that the following bid for the senior high school additions and renovation project described in the plans and specifications heretofore adopted by this board is accepted the same being the lowest responsive, responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor, Conlon Construction Company of Dubuque, Iowa. Amount and base bid, $25,100,000. Alternate bid number three, $95,900. Alternate bid number five, $116,100. Alternate bid number seven, a credit of $89,600. Contract amount, $25,222,400. Section two, the president and secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor. Such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution making an award of the construction contract to Conlon Construction Company as read. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And Dr. Johnson's dancing in the house.
It'll be two years of synchronized classrooms and working around with some noise, but when it's done, it's in fantastic addition to the district.
Yep, you can call Lee Coulter for any advice on how to.
Fire hose earplugs.
Yep, exactly. Great.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, any person wishing to address the board can step up to the microphone.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We skipped over board salutes.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's all right.
My fault.
We got a couple.
I've got one.
Okay.
Kudos to the AmeriCorps partners in learning program and staff who have worked in partnership again this past year to help improve student reading proficiency. The program was supported by over $210,000 federal grant. The partnership had a positive impact with 89% of students showing increased reading proficiency as a result of working with an AmeriCorps tutor 30 times or more over the school year. In total, AmeriCorps members tutored 1,431 kindergarten through third grade students throughout the school year. Thirty-six AmeriCorps members were trained by the Dubuque Community School District staff and collaborated closely with elementary school classroom teachers and instructional coaches to provide one-on-one or small group tutoring sessions to struggling readers. This is an example of another great community partnership that is yielding very positive results for our schools.
Sure is, yep.
I have a board salute. Board salute goes to Dubuque senior student and golfer Matty Hawkins, who's having outstanding summer season. In June, Matty won the junior, the John Deere Classic Junior Title and went on to take third in the Iowa PGA Junior Tour Championships. Congratulations to Matty on a job well done. Best of luck as she continues competition this summer. I happen to be, I happen to play golf today with her grandfather and she also is doing very well in a PGA Junior Tournament in Madison, Wisconsin. Congratulations.
Tearing it up. All right.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to remove any items from the consent agenda?
I would like to pull the personnel report.
Okay, the personnel report is pulled. Anything else? All right. Absent the personnel report, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Personnel report.
Absolutely. So, we've got, had an interesting process this spring, as you know. The principal at Tablemont Elementary School left to take a job in Burlington. So, we opened up that position earlier this summer, usually with a summer opening for administrative job. Makes us a little bit nervous candidate-wise. We were thrilled this year. We had 22 candidates. It was tough to pull that number down to eight, but we had eight very highly qualified candidates with different backgrounds, three internal, the rest are external, some with principals' experience, some without. But after, so we put two committees together of teachers, some parents, and some forum staff. Teachers gave up two full days of their summer. Some of them are in the room here today waiting to see how this turns out. But gave up two beautiful summer days to sit in a room and ask questions of candidates and that can be a long, long process. We then had a conversation with the committee and I did some background checks, some reference calls. Anyway, long story short, I'm very happy to forward Matt Hall as the recommended next principal at Tablemont Elementary School. Matt has been in the district for some time. He's currently the instructional coach at Fulton Elementary School. He's been there since 2009. Prior to that, he was the technology coach. So, Matt has a little bit of a unique background, having both the technology and the instructional background. Prior to that, a classroom teacher. Matt has a bachelor's degree from Luther College, a master's degree from a school west of here that wears red and white. I think it's located in Lincoln, University of Nebraska. And then, a master's in administration from University of Northern Iowa. So, we're very excited to make that recommendation. Matt's been with the district for a number of years, as I just mentioned, and he has the skills and the background to do a great job, be a collaborative leader and a team leader at Tablemont Elementary School.
You had me at he was a graduate of Luther College.
Okay, I figured that.
Anybody can get in there. And George Davis would remind you that at Nebraska, the N stands for knowledge.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion to approve that.
We do.
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that approve the personnel report as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
So, those of you who don't know Matt, he's in the back of the room here tonight, so.
Congratulations.
Okay.
I have a few motions this evening. The first is I move the Board of Education approve Hewlett-Packard as the sole source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Hewlett-Packard is a sole source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals. Any discussion?
I know Kobe has stepped out.
No.
Kobe, you want to come forward? I think the public should understand why we're doing this and take a moment just to explain.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Ryan Gans, thank you for this opportunity. Just to elaborate a little bit about what you were approving tonight is we are looking to enter into an agreement, or excuse me, an arrangement with HP as a sole source provider. The reason being is that the manufacturer is able to provide us the lowest cost for any item that is distributed by them. The problem, or the issue that we've run into before is we're trying to maintain good vendor relations with resellers. And vendors, when they participate on a bid, what will happen is is that they find out they're going up against HP direct pricing and they elect not to bid on that. So, one of the things that we've figured out is, well, instead of doing that, why don't we just go ahead and move forward with conducting business directly with Hewlett-Packard, knowing that we will be guaranteed the lowest price from the manufacturer? And they have also given us a written statement that would state just that as well, too. What we will end up doing goes, we'll review this process annually and if we find out that for a lack of service or product negotiation or pricing that we are uncomfortable with that, then we will revert back to the board policy that states that anything over a certain dollar amount will go out for RFP. We will do that, we conduct that annually and also anytime we do go over that dollar amount, we will always make sure that we cannot get that price anywhere from any other provider. Excuse me, that would be cheaper than what the direct manufacturer provide us to the district. I think it's a win for our, our school system. We've had numerous occasions, we've been doing business with HP for almost three years and every time we've gone out for RFP, HP has been the lowest bid provided back to us. We think it's in light of continuing good vendor relations with resellers who know that they can't bid against the contract, we think it's in the best interest of the district to move forward and work directly with HP. So, there, explain that, yes?
There are no drawbacks to this at all, are there? I know, if we saw the pricing, it's terrific pricing.
No, there's no drawback at all. We control our own destiny working with Hewlett-Packard. At any point in time, we decide to move away from them, there is no, there is no commitment, no agreement that we have signed directly with the manufacturer, just we end up walking away. We, like I said, we've been very happy with the caliber of support, service, and ultimately the pricing we've been getting from the manufacturer, so we believe it's in the best interest of the condition. Yes.
So, approximately, what fraction of a percentage of our computers are HPs? Just ballpark.
I would say probably over 60% of our computers are now Hewlett-Packard equipment over the last two years. If you recall, on the roadmap, roadmap or the plan that we put together for technology, we bought 1,200 devices for a lot of the 21st century learning carts. Those are all HP laptops. We ended up taking the staffing laptops and splitting those out over a three-year period, which are all HP equipment as well. And then, last year, when we put in grades two through five at the elementary level, we put in HP laptops as well. In addition to yourselves, you're running HP laptops as well, too.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Great work, by the way.
Yeah, great work, yep.
We've been very happy and it's been, I think it's in the best interest of maximizing the taxpayers' dollar and I think we're doing a great job at that by leveraging the vendor to give us the best pricing we possibly could hope for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kobe.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve change order number one to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC on the Hoover School Bus Parking Lot Project in the increased amount of $9,860.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC on the Hoover School Bus Parking Lot Project in the increased amount of $9,860. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Move the Board of Education approve change order number one to McDermott Excavating on the Irving School Bus Parking Lot Project in the increased amount of $4,894.18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to McDermott Excavating on the Irving School Bus Parking Lot Project in the increased amount of $4,894.18. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Move the Board of Education approve change order number one to Geisse Roof, Roofing Company on the Eisenhower and Jefferson Roof, Schools Roof Damage Repair Project in the increased amount of $4,838.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Geisse Roofing Company on the Eisenhower and Jefferson Schools Roof Damage Repair Project in the increased amount of $4,838. If I remember right, Mr. Burkhardt, this gets covered by insurance as well, even though it's a change order, so. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
This next motion also falls into the category of insurance coverage. This is for the Sageville. I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Geisler Brothers Company on the Sageville School Roof Repair Project in the increased amount of $18,027.75.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Geisler Brothers Company on the Sageville School Roof Repair Project in the increased amount of $18,027.75. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Move the Board of Education approve the following resolution for sale of district equipment, which we do from time to time. Whereas, pursuant to policy number 8142, the district is offering the personal property listed for sale by public bid on govdeals.com July 16th through the 30th, 2015 as follows. 1998 Ford Connell Line E350 van and IT communication equipment and is given notice thereof as required by said policy. And whereas, one or more of the items listed may draw a bid more than $5,000, requiring notice, hearing, and board action to determine whether the bid or bids should be accepted. Now, therefore, be it resolved, in the event any of the items listed draws a bid more than $5,000, a public hearing shall be held August 8th, 2016 at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road in Dubuque, Iowa, to determine whether the bid or bids should be accepted. Notice of the time and place of the public hearing shall be published in the Telegraph Herald as required.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution for sale of district equipment as read. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, the point of order is the date accurate, the 2015 date, July 16th through...
Oh, no.
Can we amend that and approve it with a correction? Okay. Thank you, my colleague pointed that out.
But you didn't read it.
I just blew right by it. I, you know, I'll get there. I move the Board of Education approve the donation of a little free library to Hoover School in memory of Vi, is it Bogie?
I would assume Bogie.
Foster grandparent in the amount of $299.95. This is, a library is where you can take a book, leave a book, that's outside the building.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation of a little free library to Hoover School in memory of Vi Bogie, a foster grandparent in the amount of $299.95. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
The committee received a very nice endorsement for the following motion, and so, I'll read it as written. I move that the Board of Education approve naming the Roosevelt Middle School Auditorium the Dale Lass Auditorium of Performing Arts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve naming the Roosevelt Middle School Auditorium the Dale Lass Auditorium of Performing Arts. Any further discussion?
I know that Dale doesn't know this, but he has to wear a sandwich board out front during all future events.
That isn't the fine print that we get to read, yeah. That isn't the fine print that we can read, yeah.
Yeah, he should know that.
I would just throw in that former Board President Steve Hodge spent a tremendous amount of time making sure that that auditorium was really first-class. He's been involved with the arts and the community, and Steve and his group, when we, when we put that auditorium together, he spent a lot of time making sure that it was done really, really well.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Mr. Keller?
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Ryan Gans. Just want to report on a couple things. As you know, June 30th is the end of our fiscal year, so the report in your packet is for the full fiscal year from July 1 through June 30th. In the year-to-date column, that represents 12 months' worth of cash transactions. So keep that in mind, we are on an accrual basis for our financial reporting. So over the next couple months, our department will be working on those accruals, which are payables and receivables, which we will then enter those entries into our system. So if you were to look at the encumbrance column, for example, on this sheet, that's really the accrued payroll for July and August of 2016. Relates to last fiscal year because it's part of the teacher's contract, but it's not paid by June 30th. We pay them from September 1 through August 31st. So if you look at the budget balance, especially in that general fund area, that's really reflected of 14 months' worth of expenditures. So we'll be reversing out the two months from we paid in July and August of 2015, and that amount was roughly $11,700,000. So if you were to take that over expenditure by eight, take off the 11, it's really a positive number of $3 million. So we didn't overspend our budget by 8 million. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case you were looking at that. A second piece is the management fund, and you see again, under the budget balance, that's 1.6 overspent. That reflects the 1.8 million worth of accrued expenses from the year before. So we haven't, again, taken out those accrual entries yet. We'll be doing that. 1.8 of that was that early retirement incentive from really the 1415 school year that was paid in 1516, so that's reflective there. The last piece I want to bring your attention to was the Pebble Fund, which is Fund 36. You see that is spent, or overspent compared to what we'd have budgeted. Bring your attention to the rent issue. When we did our original budget for Pebble, that did not include kind of the change that the Iowa Department of Education had with the special education funds, and part of that funding was moved to, we had to now pay rent rather than a special education cost. So part of that over expenditure is due to that rent that we paid to both Hillcrest and Four Oaks. Last piece I want to bring your attention to was, if you were to look at all the different revenues from all of the funds, you will see that we are right near where we had budgeted, or even some of them had exceeded our budget amounts. So I think that's good news for fiscal year 1516. Any questions on anything I went over, or any other parts of the report? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Brings us to Educational Programs Policy Strategy Committee report.
Ms. Ryan.
The only thing I'll report out on is we are looking at and stand putting together how we're going to redo the de-silt committee, and what it's going to look like, how we're going to report out with community members and the buildings meeting together, and how we meet the reporting needs as well as the participation needs of everybody, and to make it a much more effective type of meeting. So more to come on that. So we had some discussion on that as well.
Okay. Great.
Thanks. I move that the Board of Education approve the 2016-2017 Board Committees as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2016-17 Board Committee as submitted. I think you can find them on page 168 of your agenda.
Nothing's changed.
And we adopted the "If it's not broke, don't fix it" methodology. I think it's working very well, so why mess that up? So thank you to all for your service on those committees. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, that brings us to, any board member issues or comments? Not hearing any? Any on the superintendent's side or administration?
Not really. Summer is going fast. Administrators are starting to come back. We have our first district leadership meeting next Thursday, so the school year will quickly be upon us. So kind of a lull for a couple weeks, but picking up steam very quickly.
All the kids watching didn't hear you say it.
I know. Remind my kids every day, sometimes twice.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right.